Members and Honorary Aldermen, I am very pleased to welcome you back to the Council Chamber today following an absence due to restrictions of Covid pandemic and more recently the refurbishment of the Chamber. I'd like to thank everyone who's been involved in the refurbishment for the work they've done and the end results that have been achieved. You'll see that there have been a number of practical and technical improvements. We will be taking advantage of the full technology benefits over time. I'd like to remind you there will be a short demonstration of the queuing system for speakers and the new voting system after this meeting is closed. I encourage you all to attend, so please remain seated at the conclusion of business. A few housekeeping announcements before we start. A fire alarm test is not scheduled for this morning. Therefore, if the fire alarm is activated, please leave the room, exit the building as soon as possible and make your way to the fire assembly point outside of the Great Hall. Mobile phones are to be turned off or put on silent. Now that we're back in the Chamber, members, can I remind you to raise your hand if you wish to speak? The Vice Chairman will add you to the list. When I call you to speak, please stand to address the Council. Please note that speakers on Part One and Part Two matters will be timed in accordance with standing orders. Thank you. Can I please have apologies for absence?
Thank you, Chairman. Apologies have been received from Stephen Broomefield, Mark Cooper, Debbie Kurnow-Ford, Mike Ford, Tim Groves, Mark Kemp-Gee, Jackie Porter and Martin Todd. We've also got apologies from Roger Price, who will be joining the meeting but can't be here until a little later this morning, and from Honorary Aldermen Keith Chapman, Chris Connor, Robyn McIntosh and Roy Perry. Thank you.
Thank you. All members who believe that it is a disclosable pecuniary interest in any matter to be considered at the meeting must declare that interest and having regard to Part Three, Paragraph 1.5 of the County Council's Members' Code of Conduct, leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with Paragraph 1.6 of the code. Furthermore, all members with a personal interest in a matter being considered at the meeting should consider, having regard to Part Five, Paragraph Four of the code, whether such interests should be declared and have regard to Part Five, Paragraph Five of the code, consider whether it is appropriate to leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with the code. We move on to the minutes. Can we please start with page five? Everybody happy with that? Page, sorry, page six? Seven? Eight? Nine? Ten? Eleven? And twelve. Is everybody happy? Members, the minutes of the County Meetings, at the Council Meeting on the fourteenth of May are before you. Please note a small correction to minute eighty-six on page ten, which should reference the Assembly of European Regions. Other than that, can I sign the minutes as a correct record? Thank you. Members, we move on to Agenda Item Four, which is deputations. To receive the following deputation, Kirsty Smiley, on behalf of the Disability Union regarding totus school transport, is unable to join us today. So we have, I've forgotten what his name is, but can I have the deputation from? I think it's, I think it's Mr Baker.
How about now? Great, okay. So my name is George Baker. I'm Director of the Disability Union. I'm filling in for Kirsty today to talk to you about the issues that a lot of parents and children are facing with school transport in Hampshire. Now, it's important to mention that really there are two issues here. Firstly, there are the cuts that have taken place. Secondly, there appears to be, secondly, there appears to be, oh my goodness, I'm so sorry. And secondly, it appears that there seems to be a general operational failure with the school transport service. Now, I can speak from personal experience about why transport for children with disabilities is so important. I've been lucky throughout all my schooling, all the way up to university, I was provided with transport to get to and from school. Without that, my attendance would have been far lower than it was. And it wasn't great, it was about fifty percent. But having that transport enabled me to go all the way through the educational system, achieve good results and get the stills and socialisation that have enabled me to do all the things I do now. What we're seeing at the moment is that there are dozens and dozens, I believe it's possible at least ninety people have contacted us now, parents who are unable to or are struggling to send their disabled children to school because they have not been provided with transport. Most of the time, this is despite them having an existing award for transport. It simply hasn't been arranged, contracts or tenders haven't been sorted, or there is just operational issues that have meant that there's a delay in arranging transport for children. Now, what this means is that a lot of disabled children are simply not going to school. Many of them don't have a timetable for when the service will be put in place for them. One parent that we're aware of and has been told that she will have to wait up to a month before transport can be arranged for her child. That means that she will be unable to let him to school. It's around three hours an hour to get to get him there and she has two other disabled children who go to separate schools. Without this service, people miss out on their education. And really, this isn't about, isn't the immediate issue. This isn't about the fact that children are in a mess a few days or even a month at school. This is about the impact it will have on their future opportunities and their ability to contribute to society. Disabled children miss out on far more education than non-disabled children as it is. They struggle as it is, particularly as after the pandemic where a lot of them simply will not have been to school during that period at all. These children's life outcomes will be altered. And the truth is that long term, many of them will not be in education, employment or training because of these sorts of issues that they face. School transport or lack of it is just one other thing to add to the enormous pressures that parents and children are under at the moment. I think it's vitally important that the Council consider the situation and the impact it has on these families. It will also mean, in fact, there is one lady who may have to give up her career because she isn't being offered transport for her, I think she's got two disabled children. And that means she's not working. That means she'll be on benefits. That, she will cost the state more than anything. And in fact, a lot of these people, they will win if they have to take the Council to tribunals. It will cost you a lot of money. It is a, I believe personally, it's a mismanagement of funds not to organise the service properly and prioritise it. The Council need to save money. Now, with regard to this service, the way to do it is a general reorganisation. Cutting little bits of money off the edges won't make a huge difference to your budget and it will mean that children suffer. It is, there needs to be a better way of organising this public service and recognising how vital it is. It is an investment in the future of these children and honestly, in the future of Hampshire. It's about making sure that they have the ability and the opportunity to contribute rather than become non-financially contributing members of society. I think that is mostly all that I would want to say. There's one other thing that I would like to, to mention, I think. I understand the position of, that you're in, where you need to save an awful lot of money. You have huge demands from different sectors of the population who don't want to stop their services. I want everyone to know that we recognise that. And I don't think anybody is suggesting that saving money is a bad thing. What I do think is important is that these situations are recognised for how important they are and that any changes to the service are done in proper consultation with the people who will be affected. And it is also true that it should be partly their responsibility to help you organise the service. By involving services, we will find better, cheaper ways to organise services like this and make them work for everybody. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr Baker, and I do apologise for not introducing you properly in the beginning. But it's a very, very difficult decision for the Council, so thank you for bringing it to us and I'm sure it will be decided in the near future. Thank you very much for your attendance. I'm not going to say.
Just a point of order, Chairman, may I? Is there, if it's at all possible, if there's a transcription of the speech, certainly I'd be grateful for it, if there is one.
I'm sure somebody could ask Mr Baker for that. We now go on to Agenda Item Five for my announcements. I'd like officially to pay tribute to the former Queen on behalf of the full Council. We have already sent a letter to King, to King Charles, giving our sincere condolences. And I think actually for her dedication throughout her seventy-year reign, we all realise just how much she was admired by the whole world and be sorely missed by everyone. Our condolences must go to her family at this very sad time. Can I invite the Leader to pay tribute?
Chairman, thank you very much. I wish to join the Chairman in conveying my deepest sympathies and condolences to the Royal Family on the passing of Her Majesty the Queen. The late Queen was one of our country's rock. For seventy years, she was a constant and calming presence through times of change and instability. She carried out her duties with great dignity, wisdom, humour and genuine care for the people of the United Kingdom. Her late Majesty had a special connection with Hampshire. She and Prince Philip spent part of their honeymoon at Broadlands in Romsey in nineteen forty-seven and returned there to mark their diamond wedding anniversary in two thousand and seven. During her reign, she made several visits of military and naval significance to Aldershot, Portsmouth and other places in Hampshire, and we cherish the memories of these occasions. At this summer's Platinum Jubilee celebrations, communities across Hampshire came together to commemorate and give thanks to, thanks to her late Majesty's seventy years of dedicated public service. This month, we came together once again, this time in sorrow and mourning, but also sharing fond memories of the late Queen's lifetime of outstanding duty to the nation. I was honoured to sign the Book of Condolences for Her Majesty's at the Great Hall in Winchester and take part in Winchester's proclamation event to announce the beginning of the reign of King Charles III. Lord Lieutenant of Hampshire, Nigel Ackers, Sir and Squire, spoke highly to me of the organised and respectful manner in which the County Council and its staff arranged these events and commemorations. I would like to extend, extend my gratitude to the County, District and Borough Officers for their hard work during the national mourning period, making sure that Hampshire was able to pay a fitting tribute to the remarkable life of our longest reigning monarch. I have written to His Majesty, King Charles III, on behalf of Hampshire County Council to send our condolences and best wishes for a long and successful reign. My Elizabeth II rest in peace. God save the Queen. King, thank you. Nearly.
Thank you, Leader. I'd like to invite Honorary Alderman Michael Woodhall to pay tribute.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, and thank you for inviting me to make a brief speech about our connection with Her Majesty the Queen. I, along with a number of other councillors here today, were very privileged to meet her on a number of occasions. And I, as Chairman of the County Council and former Deputy Leader, had many advantages in which to take part in those visits. During my term between two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine, and prior to that as Deputy Leader, as I've just said, we were honoured to meet a number of the members of the Royal Family who visited Hampshire and from further afield, which included, of course, Her Majesty the Queen and Prince Philip. More recently, Councillor Elaine Still and myself represented the County Council at the funeral attended by Her Majesty of Jeannie, Countess of Carnarvon, whose late husband was, of course, her racing manager for many years and indeed a member of Hampshire County Council and a former chairman. Her Majesty had very strong links with Hampshire, having spent her honeymoon, as the Leader has just mentioned, at Broadlands and her visits in November, for many years were very much welcomed by the residents of, of the town. She also visited Winchester on numerous occasions, of which we will record for history's sake as very significant parts of our cultural history. But on meeting Her Majesty the Queen, one was immediately captivated by her endearing smile and that just for one moment, one brief moment, you were the centre of her attention. But more importantly, thanks to Catherine Ogle this morning, our Dean, she mentioned how her Christian's faith, Her Majesty's Christian faith, had throughout her life given her the strength to endure the many challenges she had to endure during her long reign. Madam Chairman, this country, this county and the wider world will be poorer by her passing, but her exemplary example of service will live on forever in the hearts and minds of her people throughout the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Woodhall. Can I just invite other members of the Council to pay tribute if they would like to? Just a word of caution, there might be many that would like to speak, so can you just be wary of that? So is there anybody that would like to speak? Yeah. Thank you, Councillor Joy, would you like to speak?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I'd just like to share just a few personal memories of her late Majesty. As a sixteen-year-old cadet, still very damp behind the ears, I was immensely privileged a very long time ago, sixteen years old, as you would imagine, as to be a standard bearer of the combined cadet force national standard and a guard of honour when she graciously came to open a newly-built chapel in the grounds of my school on its four-hundredth anniversary. I was, I was greatly personally affected and whilst I didn't personally meet her at the time, the, the impact on, on myself and others around, the impression of the graciousness and so on, and clearly in a, a faith orientated setting, is something I have never, ever forgotten. So many years later, I, like Honorary Alderman Woodhall, had the privilege of actually being Chairman of this authority on the occasion when Her Majesty and Prince Philip actually came to the, the Hampshire show, the New Forest Show in Diamond Jubilee Year. And she was incredibly, I was going to say cool and gracious, because on that particular occasion, when we, we had lunch in the tent, the temperature was forty-five degrees. She was as cool as a cucumber while the rest of us were all soaked to the skin with perspiration. How she did it, I don't know. Well, I do to a certain extent because the Queen's surgeon was actually sat opposite me and shared a few secrets, which I will not share with you now, and so on, but an incredibly gracious lady. I've also had the privilege of actually holding a commission in two of the three main services in this country. Now, one could argue, cynics have argued in the past, that actually it's a rare occasion for the Queen to make two mistakes of granting me a commission in two services, but that is something which now, no, seventy years on, you know, I shall remember with great affection, a lady with immense grace, a huge faith and an example of managing challenges which some of us can barely imagine how we could possibly cope with and service to this country over such a long time. We shall miss her greatly and so will I.
Thank you, Councillor. Can we move to Councillor Rojchard?
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to send my condolences to the Royal Family on the death of her late Majesty the Queen and echo the contributions that are made so far to remark her seventy-year reign and lifetime of public service to our country. I'd also like to take the opportunity to just thank our Council Officers for the excellent work that they did during the, the time of grieving and the events that they organised and enabled us to pay our final respects to Her Majesty and make the beginning of the reign, and mark the beginning of the reign of King Charles III. For most of us, the Queen was the only suffering we have known in our lifetime. We will feel her absence keenly, especially on Christmas Day and other royal events. However, her legacy of public service and duty to our nation will endure. His Majesty the King could not have had a better teacher and I wish him a long and healthy reign and successful reign. I would also like to take the opportunity to send my best wishes to Her Majesty the Queen Consort in her new role. God save the King.
Thank you, Councillor Chad. Can we now go to Councillor Hughes?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I would like to take you back to nineteen ninety-one. At that time, I had been in the Royal Navy for sixteen years. I'd been a commissioned officer for just under, just over one year. And I was serving in Her Majesty's ship HMS Campbelltown. Her son was the Flight Commander. And you may not know this, it was never made public, but they paid a private visit to HMS Campbelltown in nineteen ninety-one and we went to sea for the day. We took the Queen, the Duke of Edinburgh and the then Duchess of York to sea. It was the first time at that point in twenty-five years the Queen had gone to sea in one of her warships and I believe it never happened since. Now, this was a private visit. The press were never informed, the TV cameras were never there, you'll never find anything on the internet. However, it was a royal visit. So there was lots of planning between Buckingham Palace and the ship. We had a Royal Visits Officer nominated and he was touring and flying back and forth to London and we were getting the programme for the day. Queen would arrive at HMS naval base in Portsmouth, she'd embark in HMS Campbelltown, we would sail, all the various serials, and the timings were to the nearest thirty seconds. Not minutes, seconds. We rehearsed it. We had a six-foot-two midshipman playing the part of the Queen and he kept getting told off by the captain because he was walking too fast. And he wasn't inquiring where he could go and what was in this compartment, he had to be more engaged in what the Queen was likely to do on the day. The next thing came, one of the serials would be, they were going to retire to the wardroom, they were going to meet the officers, we were told we had to be on our best behaviour and we were going to have pre-luncheon drinks and lunch in the wardroom with the Queen. So the message came back, what pre-luncheon drinks would they like? Came back from the palace, Dubonnet was the Queen's favourite pre-luncheon drink and for the Duke of Edinburgh, it was Double Diamond. This is nineteen ninety-one and people will laugh. So we went on to our suppliers and we said, can you get Dubonnet? Oh, yes, we can, buy the bottle. Oh, no, no, it's by the case of six. Oh, no, 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 it's twelve. Seventy-five centilitres? Oh, no, no, it's litres, it has to be litres because a measure of Dubonnet is fifty millilitres and therefore it's twenty to a bottle. So we had to buy a case of Dubonnet. Do you sell Double Diamond? We do, we do. Buy the ca, oh, no, 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 sir, it's by the case of twelve. Oh, no, twenty-four. So we had to buy twenty-four tins of Double Diamond for the Duke of Edinburgh. So it came into the mess and the Queen, as has already been described, is a wonderful, wonderful person and she's about five foot three. And the conversation came around to wearing hats in public and she remarked that when she goes to building sites and places like that, they make her wear a hard hat and she's afraid that she's going to bang her head. And one of my colleagues, who was, it wasn't me, he said, well, Your Majesty, why don't you send your husband on in advance, and if you hear a thunk, you can duck? And she said, you're not the first person that suggested that. Anyway, would you like a drink, Your Majesty? Yes, please, I'd love a Dubonnet. Would you like a drink, Your Royal Highness? I'd love a double diamond. Had lunch, I actually watched the Queen put her lipstick on post-lunch, and she does, as all ladies do it, that bit at the end where you go, I can't enact it, I've never done it before, and we went off. Marvelous, marvelous occasion. Bear in mind, this was a private royal visit. When we got alongside back in Portsmouth, those members of the ship's company that had family in Portsmouth were invited on board, and the royal party spent almost two hours on the flight deck, speaking to every member of the ship's company, their families posing for photographs, absolutely brilliant, it was first class. Two final bits. At six o'clock, in the mess, the wardroom, the twenty-three tins of beer were put on the mess table with a note saying, by royal appointment, one pound each. By quarter past six, they'd all gone. I left that ship twelve months later, and there were still eleven bottles and nineteen tots of Dubonnet behind the bar. I would say two things, if you do raise a glass for the Queen, make it Dubonnet, and you can have mine. God bless the Queen.
Thank you, councillor Hughes, I'm sure that everybody knows now there was a private visit. Can we go on now to councillor Collett?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My parents were very strict about going to school, it didn't matter how ill I was, how bad the flu or cold I had was, you're going to school. The one occasion when I was allowed not to go to school was the day the Queen visited Aldershot, and I was allowed to be taken to stand in the crowds waving at the Queen as a seven-year-old. I won't repeat a lot of what's been said so far, as I have a slightly different angle that I'd like to use in my tribute today. Indeed, you might wonder why someone who spent his whole life campaigning to make the UK a modern democracy, where everyone is represented when they cast their votes, and political parties can no longer hijack power through artificial majorities, and where no one should be granted power through inheritance, why I should be wanting to stand and pay tribute to Queen Elizabeth today? Well, I do, and I have three reasons. The first is that although she was our sovereign, she never interfered in the democratic processes, the choices made by elected politicians. She was presented with a very wide range of bill during her seventy-year reign, but she remained above the fray, even though she must have been sorely tempted to do otherwise at times, and I won't try and guess when those were. In doing this, she made sure that she was never guilty of usurping our democratic choices, flawed though our democracy is. The second reason is that until we can move to a modern, reformed democracy, where elective dictatorships become a thing of the past, because we have a proper democratic voting system, the prospect of a president Boris Johnson instead of the Queen, elected from a minority support, fills me with horror. But the third and main reason is the values that she implemented at every opportunity. Queen Elizabeth was absolutely dedicated to our country and to humanity as a whole. Who can forget when she shook the hand of Martin McGuinness and the major contribution she made there to enshining the peace process in Northern Ireland? Or how she led the way in replacing the rightly disintegrating British Empire with a Commonwealth, which above all was about nations working together across races, across continents. Race, creed, age, class, political orientation, gender, none of these things were matters of prejudice or hatred in her work. And look at how she abolished the feudal male preference primogenita, so that after a thousand years of male-first inheritance in the monarchy, from now on, that line will ignore gender. She sought to stand against such evils, promoting respect and decency consistently. And maybe that's why she was so widely loved, and why her death has had such a huge impact on so many. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Collett. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Can I invite you all to stand for a two-minute silence? Thank you, members. I'd like to thank everybody for their contributions, and I'd like to invite Henri Alderman to move to the public gallery to observe the remainder of the meeting. And can I call for a short comfort break if anybody needs it? Ten-minute break. Thank you. We're going to move to agenda item seven. Thank you, I'd like to deliver the rest of my announcements. Accolades and awards. CCBS, coveted green flags awarded again to Hampshire's world-class country parks. Hampshire residents have access to world-class green spaces following the news that all five of the county council's country parks are officially still amongst the best in the world. Each today has been awarded an internationally recognised green flag for twenty-twenty-two. Leap, the River Hamburgh, Royal Victoria, Queen Elizabeth and Stoughton Country Parks have all once again gained green flags and status, the recognition of their excellent facilities. Stoughton Country Park and Royal Victoria Country Park have also once again scooped green heritage accreditation for the management of these sites and the unique history features. Sir Harold Hilliard Gardens is delighted to announce that it has been awarded gold in Britain in Bloom South and South East Awards Heritage Gardens and Parks category. It is the ninth successive year that the gardens have been awarded this national accolade. This year, it is highly prized after the challenges that the gardens have recently faced following extreme weather patterns. The award is not only for horticultural excellence, but also for every aspect of the visitor experience. The award is a testament to the dedication and hard work of staff and of the many volunteers who make an invaluable contribution to the garden's success. NETE, following the International Green Apple Award in twenty-twenty-one, the innovative Mitchell Diva Highways Materials Recycling Facility, is pleased to announce that the county council's highway service, delivered in partnership with Milestone Infrastructure, has recently secured a second prestigious Green Apple Award for promoting and pioneering the use of plastic traffic bollards made from carbon-friendly biopolymer derivative of sugarcane. These innovative bollards are already in use around the county and complement other established low-carbon solutions that are routinely used by our highway teams. established low-carbon solutions that are routinely used by our highway teams. There's nothing to report from Children's Services, Adult Health and Care and Corporate Resources. This year for me has been quite busy. There was a centenary youth walk in the presence of Her Royal Highness, the Princess Royal, at Royal Eamington Yacht Club. This royal visit was really enjoyable, seeing all the young people who had been talked to sale, how much they enjoyed themselves and the way they all helped each other was really great and seeing the parents being so supportive shows the dedication of all involved. Her Royal Highness, the Countess of Wessex, this week was visiting Tralors. And I think you all know about Tralors, it's a disabled school. She was absolutely amazing. She talked, I think she talked to everybody. She came down to their level and she was just amazing. And then of course yesterday, she came again to the Queen Alexandra's Army Nursing Corps. And again, it was a very, a much more formal meeting, but it was, she was just completely different and, but the same, talking to everybody, making sure that everybody was comfortable. I really, really enjoyed both visits with her. She was an amazing lady and when it's so close to what's just happened and how involved she was, I thought she was just amazing. So can we move on to the deaths that we have? It's much sadness to recall the former county councillors, Mike Russell and Honorary Alderman Susan Glasspool, have sadly passed away. Mike represented the Gosport Leesland Division from 1985 to 1993 and Susan represented the Itchen Valley Division from 1996 until her retirement in 2005. Can I ask for anybody who would like to say anything about these two people? Thank you. I do, I've got my wrong glasses on. Would you like to stand? Thank you.
If I can, that one does, that one obviously doesn't. Just a few words, I seem to stand up every meeting paying tribute to old councillors, largely because I'm one of the few remembers, many of them along with Adrian Collet. I suspect there's quite a few concerned as actually will remember Susan Glasspool. I remember as being quite quiet but a very effective councillor for her area and very pleasant person to boot and I'm sorry to hear of her passing. Mike Russell was the councillor a long time ago, he and I were elected on the same day. I knew Mike best part of forty years. He represented the Leesland Brockhurst Ward in Gosport, which when he stood down I carried on, although I've since moved to yet another ward since. He was, I suppose for those who didn't know, and the best way I could describe him would be the kind of Keith House of his day. Universally loved by the Conservatives as how Keith is and thoroughly enjoyed upsetting Conservatives as well, which he did with great regularity. But he was very good on transport issues and a very, very effective councillor for his area. He really did work very hard. He was also Gosport Borough Councillor, he was Mayor of Gosport twice, didn't learn the first year, so he did a second year as well. And I remember particularly using the mayoralty and his county role to try and attract business investment into Gosport, rather than just dining with the great and the good. He went out and got to businesses and used the position to try and get them to invest in the town, which as other Gosport councillors know is never an easy task in Gosport. But he served with distinction for eight years here. He played a key role in my party building up strength in Gosport as well. He had in recent years moved away and I've lost touch a bit and he apparently was found in Pontefract in the early hours of the morning and sadly died. We don't have funeral arrangements as yet, but it's sad to hear of his passing and also of Susan Glasspool as well. And just sad that some of these who worked so hard before many people were here, one by one are leaving us, but they all leave a legacy behind. They all did good service to Hampshire and those of us who worked with them certainly remember the service they gave. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Glenn.
Thank you very much chairman. I just want to talk about Susan Glasspool actually. I don't go as far back as Councillor Chagrin. But I have been here sometime. I shared cabinet position with Susan Glasspool for quite a number of years, dare I say at the turn of the century. And she was a lovely person, we shared an office. In those days, we were all crammed into little offices, we didn't have the office space that we have at the moment. And she was one of those lady councillors that you felt you had to stand for when she walked into it. And so basically I was up and down like a yo-yo all the time as she came and went from the leader's office. But we became, because of that, we became really good friends. And after she left the county council, my wife and I spent a lot of time with her, luckily here near Winchester in the Worthies, and enjoyed her company very much. What I didn't know is that latterly she had moved to Glasgow to be, I think, close to family, where that's when we found out that she had gone. So it's very special memories and I'm glad we have councillors here who can remember, councillors who've done their service and come and gone because one day it's going to be our turn. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Glenn. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? So can I please ask you to stand for a minute silence? Thank you chair, councillors. Members, may I ask the leader to present his report?
Chairman, thank you very much. Really pleased to be able to welcome the council back into the council chamber today. I know many of you have had visits the previous evenings and this morning. I think it's one of those things where it doesn't appear that a lot of change, but actually a lot has changed, certainly in terms of the delivery of the technology. And I think most of us would agree, it's a good bit warmer than it has been in the past as well. Councillor House looks like he's getting a bit too hot, but never mind. Absolutely, I couldn't agree more councillor House. Over the last six months, extensive improvement works have been carried out. The chamber now has the appropriate and modern technology in an updated environment for our county council meetings, for formal meetings of the coroner's court and importantly for increased use by others generating additional income for the council. The improvement works include new audiovisual systems and new displays, microphones, electronic voting and conference facilities. And you heard the chairman say earlier, we've got a little briefing on electronic voting at the end of the session today, so I'm looking forward to members engaging with that process. The chamber has been completely rewired with new power. IT and optic fibre to enable streaming of meetings, accessible external viewing and remote deputation. There are new floor finishes, refurbished sheeting and furnishings, new secondary glazing, LED lighting and new heating and cooling systems. Together, these provide better air quality, ventilation, acoustics, accessibility and energy efficiency. And my thanks go to the County Council's project team and the contractor for their hard work and successful delivery of the significant improvements that we see here today. And that was a genuine thanks to them. We had a tour along myself with the deputy leader Ross Chad and met quite a few of the team and the enthusiasm that they had for what they'd done and the work that had gone into it was really, really impressive. So thanks to the team for all the work they did. Now it seems a bit strange now to be stood here and I'm going to mention a little bit about the work that went on through the heatwave. Like most of us, we sort of move on a bit quickly and all of us would have found it was a tad chillier this morning than it has been in the past. But I would like to place on record my sincere thanks to the staff at all of Hampshire's emergency services, who work courageously and tirelessly to keep the public safe during the heatwave we experienced this summer. It is show how easily it is to forget what we went through, isn't it, when things move on. Record-breaking temperatures were accompanied by extremely low levels of rainfall, which created tinderbox conditions across many countryside areas. And I wish to pay tribute to Hampshire and the Isle of Wight Fire and rescue services for their bravery in tackling wildfires across the region. And also to council staff who worked very hard to manage and protect our country parks in the challenging weather conditions. The heatwaves underline the importance and urgent need to tackle climate change. I was therefore pleased to see the report to Cabinet in July showing that positive progress had been made to reduce Hampshire County Council's carbon emissions in the first year of our climate change programme. So another issue that we've all been aware of recently, the cost of living, and another crisis that, you know, we're all aware of, the cost of living, and I welcome the additional national funding provided to support families, older people and businesses in recent months. But much more help is now needed for the autumn and winter. Hampshire County Council is working alongside our partners to explore how we can continue to support our residents. I will also be pressing government personally on behalf of the people of Hampshire to make additional hardship funding available to local authorities, so that we can further assist the many people struggling with their household budgets in the colder months. And I want to talk a little bit about Homes for Ukraine. A lot of this is linked, isn't it? So members, it has now been over seven months since a terrible conflict in Ukraine began. Hampshire County Council's solidarity with the people of Ukraine remains constant. I am proud that the county council, alongside district and borough councils and community partners, has welcomed over a thousand families into Hampshire and through the Homes for Ukraine scheme. I'm especially grateful to Hampshire residents who have opened their homes to people fleeing the conflict in Ukraine. Their tremendous generosity and compassion have enabled Ukrainian families to rebuild their lives and resume their education in our county. Although times are tough, I hope that Hampshire hosts will continue to make their homes available to our new Ukrainian residents in the coming months, as they continue to settle into life in our county. I also encourage people who are considering hosting a Ukrainian family to register their interest on the government's website. The Local Government Association has called for the government to increase payments for hosts and the county council to support any national action that will help with this. In the meantime, I'm pleased to announce that the county council will be making an additional payment to hosts of £200 per month for five months to help with energy costs over the winter period. As public services and communities, we will and we must continue to help the people of Ukraine in their time of great need. Also like to give you an update in terms of where we are with devolution. And members, you might be aware that two wave one devolution deals were published in August. One deal was for York and North Yorkshire and the other was for Derbyshire, Derby, Nottingham and Nottinghamshire. We continue to watch both deals closely and have identified a good amount of common ground with the Pan Hampshire prospectus. We have previously agreed to pause our engagement with government during the period of political uncertainty over the summer. Now that there is clarity on the new prime minister and cabinet appointments, I firmly believe a county deal continues to be a landmark opportunity for significant new powers, funding and investment into our area. We will therefore re-engage with government on devolution and begin further detail to Cabinet in October. Sort of also linked to that in terms of our economic strategy and business, Hampshire County Council's economic strategy, which was published in June, aims to deliver the Hampshire 2050 vision of a thriving and prosperous economy that supports excellent public services, provides high quality and inclusive employment and businesses opportunities and enhances quality of life across our country. Hampshire businesses will be among our core partners in delivering this economic strategy. I had the pleasure of meeting many excellent businesses and business leaders at the Farborough Air Show and other events this summer. I'm delighted to report that there is a real appetite among the businesses, around the business community to work more closely with the county council. I'm really looking forward to meeting more people in Hampshire's brilliant businesses community in the coming months. By working positively and constructively with partners across all sectors, we will create opportunities to make Hampshire an outstanding place for people to live, work and play. Thank you madam chairman.
Thank you leader. Can we now move on to items, agenda item seven, which is questions understanding order 16.1.1. And we have thirty minutes for this. And this is to deal with questions pursuant to standing order 16.1.1, where a member has submitted more than one question, their second question and subsequent questions will not be answered until all members' first questions have been dealt with. Members, we have thirty minutes in total for questions. I've been informed that councillor Groves, who has two questions on the list, is unable to attend the meeting today. Therefore, his questions will be dealt with by way of a written answer after the meeting, which will be circulated to all members of the council. Moving on to question two on the list, I invite councillor Andy Tree to ask his question.
Thank you madam chairman. My question is to councillor Rob Humby, leader and executive member for Policy, Resources and Economic Development. And my question is, what specific actions will Hampshire County Council be taking to proactively and positively support the ongoing regeneration of the Whitehill and Borden over the next two years within my electoral division of Whitehill, Borden and Limford? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tree. Sir Humby, would you like to?
Thank you chairman and thank councillor Tree for his question. Hampshire County Council has played a key role in the town regeneration proposals for more than seventeen years. A regular meeting structure was created with the Strategy Board and Delivery and Implementation Group previously to that. Hampshire County Council continues to have representatives in that group and it's currently in putting into a new delivery plan. In terms of the highways and transport, since the opening of the New Relief Road, Hampshire County Council has been focused on the active travel infrastructure and with partner support, over £10 million spending to date implementing our walking and cycling strategy. In terms of the education part, Oakmoor School is a very popular, it is very popular, and it is intended to be expanded by two forms of entry for September. Current proposals, current proposals exist to expand by one form the existing boarding infant and junior school in 2024. We've done a lot of work in terms of skills of employment and the Future Skills Centre provides construction training to over 200 young people and adults. Hampshire County Council is providing a range of employment and skills programmes connected to the Whitehill and Borden regeneration scheme. And linked again with the economic development, Hampshire County Council engage in with the Whitehill and Borden regeneration programme. Recently, we have engaged in the new employment space to accommodate future businesses. The Hampshire County Council team sits on the employment group and the enterprise zone steering group. Thank you chairman.
Councillor Tree, do you have a supplemental?
Yes, just very quickly, thank you chairman. Thanks for the answer and Oakmoor School I fully support, my two sons go there and my youngest, my second son has just started year seven. So I noticed in the answer that it's not much about public transport, adequate public transport. And I know there are various business networks, other entities that struggle to get inward investment into the town simply because there is no direct connection to the railway network. It's not an easy answer because it's how do you do it, where does it go, who pays for it? But I just wondered what specific plans you had in the immediate future to address that problem because public transport is a county council issue. Thanks.
Councillor Humby?
Okay, thank you very much. I think public transport is a big issue for all.
I think public transport is a big issue for all of us. I think the partnerships that we have working with the town council and the local authority there as well, and working with the new strategy through the LTP4, we'll see further work that we'd be doing with that. But you know the system we have in place with that D I G group as well. This is a hot topic of discussion there, and we will sit down with the teams in there and discuss that in future. But it is on our agenda, absolutely, councillor Tree.
Thank you, councillor Humby. Can we move on to councillor Adrian Collett to councillor Nick Adams King, the executive member for Highway Operations?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yes, my question is to councillor Adams King, who I appreciate is new in his role and is keen to improve matters. But the question is, how many miles of pavements or footway do we have across all of our highways in Hampshire? And how many miles of those are being resurfaced in the current municipal year?
Would you like to reply?
I would, thank you, Madam Chairman. The total length of footway in Hampshire is 4,212 miles. During the current financial year, 2023, 60 miles of footway will receive a surface treatment, which includes resurfacing. So that's complete resurfacing as opposed to repair. The selection of sites is based upon a combination of locally identified need and the application of established asset management principles, with sites prioritised for inclusion in the programme within the overall funding available.
Thank you, councillor. Do you have a supplementary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, yes I do. With 4,212 miles and 60 miles of which are being resurfaced, at that rate it would take 70 years to get around all of our pavements just once, and I'm not sure how many would last 70 years. So does the executive member consider this to be good enough? And will he ensure that a better share of our highway maintenance budget is given to footway resurfacing in the future for the sake of those elderly, frail or post-operative residents who find the pavements where they live too difficult to negotiate and end up either walking in the road or being trapped in their homes by the dreadful condition of the footways? Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Adams King.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And my apologies, councillor Collett, I forgot to thank you for your question, so I thank you for your supplementary. At the end of the day, our footways don't receive the same kind of treatment or the same kind of wear and tear that our roads do. So our roads inevitably have to take the priority in that sense. The amount of footway that we repair year on year varies, it depends upon the amount of work that's done. And certainly when there are cases of their having need for repair, then we certainly deal with it. We communicated a little while ago about a particular road in your division, and where very sadly, an elderly lady had fallen over, and you were concerned that the footpath hadn't been repaired. And I think it's important to give you a sense of how this works in the respect in the case of Hawley Road. In the last 18 months, there have been 42 reports of different defects there, 37 of them in your division, five in that of Farborough North. What's really interesting is that only one of those came from a county councillor. That actually came from the deputy leader, but for an issue in your division. And I think what that tells me is that it's contingent on all of us to look at the condition of not just our roads but our pavements as well. I would encourage you all, we are the eyes and ears of our residents, we are the eyes and ears of those vulnerable residents whom we need to be reporting in the issues. And when we can and when we see that there are issues with pavements, then we absolutely will be fixing them. Whether that requires us to completely resurface a pavement is a different matter. But if we want to maintain the accessibility of, for our elderly and disabled fellow residents of Hampshire, then that's what we need to be doing. So yes, we do need to do better, but we all have a part to play in that it's not just a matter of the County Council not doing things, it's about us reporting when we see an issue and making sure that it's in our schedule to repair. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. Can we now move on to, from councillor Alex Crawford to councillor Liz Fairhurst, the executive member for Adult Services and Public Health?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, on the 20th of September, the County Council's network warned that if no more funding is forthcoming for adult social care, councils will have to further scale back the quality and accessibility of care services, meaning that people could be waiting longer than they do at present for a care package. What would the implications of this forecast be for adult social care in Hampshire? And will there be any extra funding for adult social care in Hampshire as a result of the government mini-budget on the 23rd of September?
Thank you, sorry, I'm not Russell, but mine seems not to be working. Thank you, councillor Crawford, for your question. All upper-tier local authorities with responsibility for adult social services have had challenges over an extended period, which have been further exacerbated since the pandemic. Hampshire has seen a continued increase in the numbers of people seeking support since the easing of national lockdown restrictions, both in the community and following a hospital admission, as well as continued workforce challenges and rapid increases in the cost of care. Currently, we continue to proactively manage referrals through our contact assessment and resolution team and through our local care management services, prioritising and risk assessing people and responding accordingly. Positively, neither through the pandemic or subsequently have we needed to use care easements to restrict access to our services. Staff in all our teams and settings continue to go above and beyond. We can also continue to see excellent support being identified for people through Connect to Support Hampshire community information, as well as continued high utilisation of local forms of support managed by voluntary sector partners. This winter signals potential increased risk across health and social care systems. However, Hampshire has a range of commissioned services and directly provided support in place to mitigate risk. And if I can just go off piece for a moment, can I just ask every member over the age of 50 to make sure they get the flu vaccination this winter? And the sooner the better? Thank you. We do have one-off funding from the NHS to continue the hospital discharge programme for part of this financial year, and last week saw the announcement of £500 million to continue to support this over the winter months. However, we do not at this stage know what our share of that £500 million will be. There were no new announcements in the mini-budget other than to repeat the commitment that the £13 billion to be raised from the increase in national insurance will still be available despite the reversal of the 1.25 increase. Members will also be aware that a commitment was given to divert these resources from the NHS to social care services, but that is yet to be confirmed, but we're looking forward to it being confirmed at some stage. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fairhurst. I'm sorry you've had to change gender. Do you have a supplementary?
Thank you very much for that full and comprehensive report. At what stage do we begin to get alarmed that the government hasn't yet made an announcement, since they didn't make any announcement last Friday? Thank you.
Councillor Fairhurst?
I'm not sure I'm getting alarmed at this stage. We have plans in place to see us through the winter. I suspect those plans to succeed. Extra money from the government would be lovely, desperately needed, but we will not be letting down Hampshire residents this winter.
Thank you, councillor Fairhurst. Can I now ask councillor, please excuse me, Mamalani?
Thank you, madam. Diseases like prostate cancer, COVID-19, has disproportionate impact on minority and ethnic communities. As per University of Exeter and Guardian Review, black and Asian communities wait longer for cancer diagnosis than other, up to six weeks. Does Hampshire have the same trend? If yes, what measures Hampshire County Council is taking to address this public health inequality? Thank you, ma'am.
Councillor Fairhurst?
It works this time, so thank you. Thank you for the question. Screening and treatment for cancers is delivered by the NHS, and they are the best placed people to comment on whether Hampshire has the same trend as observed in the University of Exeter study. That said, this was a very large study across England, and applying it to Hampshire, which has a very different ethnic diversity profile, makes the interpretation rather unwieldy. As the public health authority, we have a role in understanding these findings, to work with the NHS and partners, to focus interventions to minimise ethnic inequalities in cancer diagnosis. I mean, for instance, it's known that black men are significantly more likely and Asian men significantly less likely to be diagnosed with prostate cancer compared to white men. Therefore, this is an important message to communicate to black men and that they do need to take up the offer of acceptance of investigation for prostate cancer to ensure earlier and better treatment options independently of their ethnicity. White, black and Asian men with a prostate cancer diagnosis are all just as likely as each other, unfortunately, to die from the disease. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fairhurst. Do you have a supplementary?
Thank you very much for the response. Yes, it is unfortunate in 20th century, 21st century, these disparities still exist, even it is across the nation. Madam Chair, disadvantaged community don't want priority, as the need is, all they need is equality. Would the executive member and the rest of the members use Hampshire's best resources and interventions required to eradicate this new humanity? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Fairhurst, do you need to reply? No, no reply. Thank you. Thank you for your question. Okay, we're going to go on to second questions if we still have some of the 30 minutes available. So we're going to, oh, well, the second question from councillor Groves, we've already said, is going to be answered by mail. Now, the next one is from councillor Alex Crawford to Ross Child, councillor Chad, oh God, and the executive lead member for children's services.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. This month, it was reported that the Cambridge Primary School in Wellesley Aldershot was the fourth hardest school in Hampshire to get into. To address the concerns of residents living and moving into Wellesley, which is due to grow to 3,850 homes in the next few years, will the County Council consult with the developer, Granger and Wellesley residents, to ensure that places are available at the Cambridge Primary School to meet demand.
Councillor Chad?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you councillor Crawford for your question this morning. I'm pleased to say that there was sufficient year-round places on offer day in April 2022 in the Aldershot planning area with 505 offers made from 520 places. By August 22, that increased to a total of 521 offers. The Cambridge Primary School was named as a preference on 199 applications with 97 first preferences. The school was able to meet its catchment demand with 31 of the 60 offers going to children from within the catchment area. The final offer was made to a child from out of the catchment who lived 0.73 miles away. As a new school, the Cambridge Primary is growing from the bottom up, so it does not yet have a year five and year six cohort. This is due to the affordability of running classes with limited numbers. Unfortunately, when a new primary school uses catchment to give priority, parents moving into the area during the year may have difficulty securing a place because the school is already full in the year group or during the year, or during the early years of its opening. It does not run to the required year group, hence the no year five and six in Cambridge at the moment. The school admission code prohibits local authorities from holding places back for families moving into the area outside the main round. A second 420-place primary school is planned for the Wellesley development, with the first 30-year-old placements currently anticipated in September 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Chad. Do you have a supplementary?
Yes, thank you very much, councillor Chad. I would just say that despite your reassurances about the way that places are allocated, there are parents and residents on Wellesley who are so unhappy about what's happening, and whether it's to do with the way the properties are advertised by the builders selling them, encouraging them to believe that there are places available at Cambridge Primary School, or whether it is just this fact that if you move in after January during a year, you have got no prospect of getting your child into a Cambridge Primary School the following September, and that's not necessarily something that people moving into an area understand. But this has caused so much problem that the Wellesley Residents Committee and the developer have arranged a meeting at which, to which they've invited me to attend on the 17th of October to discuss this, and I was hoping that perhaps you might be able to attend and explain exactly what they might expect to be done to address this issue in the future.
Councillor Chad?
Thank you for your supplementary. Absolutely, if there is allowed, allow, we will make sure that there is an officer there, and we will also, if we can't, we will make sure that you've got a full brief of the situation so that you can share that with the meeting.
Thank you, councillor Chad. So we can now go to third questions, and again, councillor Alex Crawford to councillor Nick Adams, the executive member of the Highways Operations.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. In a sense, I almost need to apologise for bringing this question back because I did ask it more or less in this form at the last council meeting, and it's to do with ensuring the standards of service delivery in terms of on-street parking when the new system comes into place next April.
Thank you. Councillor Nick Adams?
Councillor Crawford, thank you for your question, and also thank you for showing me around your division a couple of weeks ago. That was enlightening, first time I've been to Aldershot North. So officers from E T E Parking Services are working closely with N S L, the County Council's traffic enforcement service partner, to ensure everything is in place for the county-wide service to go live from the 1st of April 23. Various tasks are being progressed in accordance with the project plan, which remains on track. Monthly liaison meetings are being held with the district and borough councils to progress issues such as the transfer of data and equipment. The service changes will also see some staff transferred to the County Council, and dialogue is already underway with those staff likely to be affected. The expanded on-street parking service will build on the authority's successful directly-managed service already operating across Fairham, Gosport, New Forest and Test Valley, which has seen significant service modernisation and efficiencies introduced since it went live on the 1st of April 2020. I should, at this point, declare an interest in the sense that I'm the chap in charge of parking for Test Valley, and I can confirm that our service has certainly improved since that point. The move to a single county-wide service, closely managed by the County Council, will overcome local inconsistencies regarding parking policies and resourcing levels. N S L have been particularly effective NSL have been particularly effective in recruiting and retaining the required number of civil enforcement officers to resource the Hampshire contract, and I have every confidence that this will continue, not least as a result of the experience that we have elsewhere. Thank you, madam chairman.
Thank you councillor. Do you have, is there a supplementary?
Yeah, sure, the supplementary is the same as last time, is please can members in affected districts have progress reports on this introduction of the new system? Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to answer that?
I don't have a problem with providing you with those at all. The one thing I would just say is that within the bounds of employment legislation around people being transferred, we would need to be perhaps a bit careful about that. But as we progress and as we get closer to the point of transfer, very happy to keep local members up to date in each of those different affected districts. Thank you, madam chairman.
Thank you councillor. So that's the end of the questions for today, so I'd like to move on now. Where are we? Move on now to constitutional matter, health and wellbeing board, pages 13 and 14, to receive a report of the chief executive regarding changes to the terms of reference for the health and wellbeing board for Hampshire. Chairmans, I invite the leader to present the report.
Chairman, thank you very much. Members, the report before you sets out the changes to the membership of the health and wellbeing board, some of which are a consequence of the implementation of the Health and Care Act 2022. I move the recommendation, chairman.
Members, are there any questions or any debate? None, thank you very much. If there is no questions or debate, members, I put the recommendations to you, D on page 13 and 14, to the vote. Are you agreed? Thank you. So that will be carried. The next, we're on to agenda item 11, which is appointments, to consider a report of the chief executive to make any member appointments or alterations as required to the membership of committees and standing panels of the county council, to statutory joint committees, to other proportional bodies the county council is represented on, or to any other bodies which are not subject to proportionality rules. Members, I'd like to draw your attention that this item is a supplementary report in Modern Gov. I invite the leader to present the report.
Chairman, thank you. Members, the report before you proposes a number of changes to membership of the county council committees and joint committees. I move the recommendations, chairman, thank you.
Thank you. I invite members to put the recommendations to the vote. Are you all agreed? Thank you, members. The recommendation is carried. Move on to the next item, which is constitutional changes, changes to the executive functions and select committee functions, pages 15 to 24, to receive a report of the chief executive notifying changes to the allocation of responsibility for executive functions, and as a consequence of those revisions, a change to the name of the culture and community select committee, and for the constitution to be amended accordingly. I invite the leader to present this.
Chairman, thank you. Members, the report before you deals with some constitutional matters regarding two of the executive member portfolios as set out in the report, and seeks approval to change the name of the culture and community select committee. I move the recommendations, thank you, chairman.
Thank you, leader. Are there any questions or debate? So can I ask for your agreement on this? Thank you. So the recommendation is carried. Thank you. Onto agenda item 11, the 2021/22 end-of-year financial report, pages 25 to 98, to consider a report of the cabinet setting out the end-of-year position for the financial period 21 to 22, seeking approval of the county council's treasury management activities and prudential indicators. Invite the leader again to present the report.
Thank you, chairman. Members, the report before you sets out the end-of-year financial position of the county council for 2021/22, following consideration by the cabinet on the 19th of July. Councillor Steve Foster will be expanding on the details of the report in his capacity as executive member for commercial strategy, estates and property. Before I do, I draw members' attention to the recommendations to approve the county council's treasury management activities and prudential indicators set out in appendix one of the cabinet report. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, leader. Member, are there any questions or debate on this matter? Oh, sorry, I beg your pardon councillor Forster.
Thank you, madam chairman, thank you, leader. Members, once again, the report highlights the strong financial grip we have in this authority. Departments have remained within budget and have delivered early SP23 savings, and in particular, our work with the NHS has seen them provide nearly £15 million of funding for the hospital discharge programme for this financial year, which councillor Fairhurst mentioned earlier on, and the huge benefit that that's delivered to our residents. I welcome the news from the government that they'll provide an additional £500 million nationally to continue this important programme over the winter months, and as again, you heard, we are continuing that locally. Our scale, capacity and our reserves have enabled us to cope with a COVID bill that runs to nearly £72 million. And I'd like to thank, once again, our officers for their diligence and hard work during the pandemic. They have done an incredible job. We have budgeted prudently, and this has enabled us to release nearly £14 million at year-end to fund some important one-off initiatives, and to add to the BBR, the Budget Bridging Reserve, which has been a cornerstone of our financial strategy over the years. Our total reserves do continue to climb, and I certainly do not apologise for that. It is only our reserves that will see us through to 25/26, and they underpin the strong financial management we continue to exhibit, and allow us flexibility to deliver the way we need to do so. Members, I commend the report to you.
Thank you councillor Forster. Is there any debate or questions? councillor Harrison.
Yes, chairman, I'd like to ask councillor Forster, if our financial strength is as strong as he indicates, could we perhaps send some of our money to central government, which are rather struggling at the moment and causing me anxiety, and a lot of anxiety amongst residents who suffer the consequences of the cost of living crisis? When and how long is this going to go on for?
councillor Davis. Sorry councillor Forster, I've done it again.
Thank you for that. I'm not sure if it was a question or a statement. I guess there was a question. The answer is no. But I would point out that Hampshire County Council is in a really good position compared to many other authorities, including some of other colours.
councillor Davis. Can we, can we just pause a minute?
Right, I'm trying, ah, that seems to work. Page 36, paragraph 49, there's an interesting word there, re-ablement. Now, I know what they're trying to say, but could this in future be written in English rather than in some sort of bizarre bureaucratic Americanism? The second thing is, in appendix two, page 83, paragraph 74, there's a reference to duration, and I think they mean average maturity.
councillor Forster. councillor Fairhurst, can you answer the first part?
Thank you. Just very quickly, re-enablement is a very common phrase used in social services and the NHS. Any attempt to explain it any other way is very long-winded and complicated. Re-enablement is helping people to get better as quickly as possible. That's it, thank you.
Thank you councillor Fairhurst. Now we go to councillor Forster.
Thank you, madam chairman, and thank you councillor Davies for the points made. I would urge any members who have questions about grammar or context or words to maybe contact officers or cabinet members prior to the meeting, so that those can be queried, because I don't think those are a highly substantive issue to the entire council. But I'll come back to him on his query relating to page 83, para 74.
Are there any more questions? Or councillor Glen.
Thank you, chairman. No problems with my mic. It's favouritism. Reference to the end of your financial report, I'm sorry that the scrutiny committee couldn't have a look at it, but we had the week of mourning, but I basically, I think it's important we pay tribute to all our directors for achieving savings. That really was the important part of your message councillor Forster. It's an extraordinary piece of work, and to do it early in these dire circumstances is absolutely brilliant. So we all owe a debt of gratitude to our officers. Am I right in saying that the lead officer on this is still Paul Archer, or am I wrong? It's definitely, thank you very much, all of you, all right. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you councillor Glen. Would you just switch your mic off, please? councillor Glen?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Is that, is there anybody else? Oh, yes.
Thanks, madam chairman. One quick question. You mentioned increasing reserves, but what risk are the reserves, what risk is there to the reserves decreasing in real terms because of the risk of inflation now, and what provisions are in place to protect against that? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Forster, for that question. Our reserves are held, and there's a lot of detail of what they're used for. Some of those allocations of reserves are used to accommodate any inflation, which is a worry at this moment, but the way our officers have managed that has been exemplary, and there is, there is minimal risk, it's managed risk, and it's acceptable to the council.
Thank you. Can we move to councillor Dowden?
Thank you, madam chairman. I was looking for an opportunity to be able to get up and say something, and it's about officers. Obviously, I appreciate any savings that officers can make, but what I also want to say, since my accident, because I've been home for a long, long time, I have to pay tribute to all the senior officers, because when I've contacted them, because I haven't gone to, because I don't know all the junior officers, and I don't think any other councillor does, but when I've needed something, I've gone to the senior officers, and I've respected the way they have helped me to be able to help my residents, because they have not gone without all the time that I've been at home, even doing it while I was basically bedridden for two months. They were able to help me. But I want to name particularly a couple. Stuart Jarvis was exceptional, and Steve Crocker was exceptional, but they were all good. But I also want to... But I also want to thank Debbie Vaughan, who even arranged for me to be able to park in the, just outside the council chamber, because I don't think I could have walked the whole distance from that car park over to here, quite frankly, but I did say, and it was even reported, I crawled here, and I would have done, to get here. But I also thank the council for allowing me to the extension, and that was very much appreciated. And I just wanted to get, and, oh, and chairman, I hadn't had the opportunity to congratulate you, because I wasn't here when you were first sat in the chair, and also the deputy chairman as well. So that's all I wanted to say, and I was looking for an opportunity, and I thought that was a good way to do it.
Thank you councillor Dowden, it's very nice to see that you're recovering. So are there any more questions? No debate? Okay, all right. So I'd like to confirm that the recommendation is either carried or lost, so can I have your vote, please?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. So that is carried. Agenda item 12, develop a medium-term financial strategy, pages 99 to 120, to consider a report of cabinet seeking approval of the mid-year report together with the financial decisions in relation to the capital programme. Members, I invite the leader to present the report.
Chairman, thank you very much. Members, the part one report before you summarises the key points considered by the cabinet at its meeting on the 19th of July 2022, for the development of the county council's medium-term financial strategy to 25/26. As with the last item, councillor Steve Foster will be expanding on the details of the report, and before I hand over to Steve, I draw your attention to the recommendations in respect of the capital programme. I would also like to take this opportunity to highlight that despite the challenges we have faced, and will clearly continue to face, both of these reports underline the strong financial management exhibited across the county council, and I would like to reassure members that I'm gauging whether MPs, the government, Deluc and Treasury officials to ensure our forecast position is fully understood, and what the consequences will be if they are not addressed in time. Thank you, madam chairman.
Thank you, leader. Members, are there any que... Oh, sorry councillor Forster.
Thank you, madam chairman, and thank you, leader. This report highlights the severe financial position we're looking ahead to in 25/26. Many councils around the country are looking at a... Many councils around the country are looking at a severe financial position for the coming year. But Hampshire County Council, through its prudent and sensible financial management, looks much further ahead. As I've already mentioned, without our reserves, I'd be concerned about the inflationary pressures in the current year, and how we might set next year's budget, as I know so many other authorities are. Instead, we're fortunate that we can take a longer term view, supported by our reserves, and officers are looking at options for closing the gap that we can see at this moment in time. Although this report is quite current, ever since it was written, we face further pressures in the form of the proposed pay award. But I actually welcome the fact that this targeted, sorry, that this pay award is targeted at our lower paid staff, at a time when so many are facing pressures in home budgets. The financial position is not our doing. It is the result of a local government funding system that is not fit for purpose. And we have stated that, and our leader is on record as working on that, particularly in the face of ever-growing social care costs, exacerbated perhaps by Covid. As the leader mentioned, we're stepping up our lobbying. In fact, the word I prefer to use is 'agitating'. And the lobbying effort, and will engage with the government to push for fundamental changes that will secure our future financial sustainability. Many other councils, as you may well have seen through LGA and CCA publications and communications, are doing likewise. Members, I commend the report and the recommendations to you.
Thank you councillor Forster. Are there any questions? councillor Crawford?
Thank you madam chair. Members, it's really, we must wish that we could go back to the budget briefing council meeting in February, the week before Russia started the war in Ukraine. Then, we were told that the government would need to fund the costs of growth, and that visiting civil servants would be briefed about the position. Also, the government was told that without long-term sustainable funding solution to the growth in social care costs, the county council was not financially sustainable in the longer term, and would be pressing the government to address this serious position over the coming year. But government response came their none. Since then, we've had the government in chaos. One prime minister forced out of office, a new prime minister, and you...
Excuse me councillor, is there a question in here somewhere?
Thank you. We need to set the background. But still no answers to the great financial difficulties that this council and many of our residents face. So it was bad enough before, but the pace of decline is quickening. So I fully recognize the prudence shown so far in this report, but I would like to see the council ensure services for vulnerable residents, to pay staff and contractors fairly in relation to inflation. Four percent in comparison with thirteen percent that's predicted for January doesn't seem that good a deal.
councillor, can we please have the question?
Hampshire. That was the question.
Could you just repeat that question, because I don't quite underst...
The question is, will the council ensure services to vulnerable residents, to pay staff and contractors fairly in relation to inflation, particularly when inflation's predicted to be thirteen percent in January, and to reassure the residents of Hampshire, which is what we're not hearing so far?
Thank you councillor Crawford. Can I just ask in future, if you would just put the question first, we don't need the preamble, we just need the question. Thank you. councillor Forster?
Thank you madam chairman. There was a question finally. It appears maybe that it's important to listen to some of the earlier announcements. Two specifics. Support for the vulnerable is something that we're already doing, as was mentioned by the leader in his statement earlier on, and the pay award, we've already commented on in what I just said slightly earlier. We are in a good position to support those vulnerable, those in good positions, thanks to the prudent management that we have and our reserves, and we will continue to do that.
Thank you councillor Forster. Is there any debate? councillor House?
Thank you very much, madam chairman. Isn't it great to be back? It really is, isn't it? You know, it's Groundhog Day, some new drapes, my Ikea lights, some microphones that don't quite work yet. And it's so cozy, isn't it? Even less space, this is no, this is debate, even less space to work with than we had before. It kind of remembers me a bit of the early nineteen seventies. I'm just about old enough to remember the early nineteen seventies. The nineteen seventies...
I think we're supposed to be talking about the questions and all the others, not about the council chamber.
Debate, this is debate, chairman. I wasn't really going to comment on this is what a million pounds looks like. But this reminds me of the nineteen seventies, the situation we're in at the moment. Those of you who are old enough to remember, we had an energy crisis. We had a run on the pound. We had rip-roaring inflation. Well, here we are again. We just haven't got Ted Heath chuckle. At least Ted Heath believed in Europe. So we are back where we were. And I will deny the rumor that's going around that Liz Truss is actually a long-term Lib Dem sleeper agent, designed to create chaos. But we have the most bizarre position of national government, which unlike Steve Forster, who I commend for his comments about a progressive pay award, seeks to reward the top one percent, and doesn't seek to protect services along the way. And this report, and this is a very well-written report, hopefully the language meets councillor Davies's needs, this well-written and short report sums up so many of the problems that this council faces. And it does say for the fifth year running, that we're not financially sustainable in the long run as a council. And that's something which we can all be deeply, deeply troubled by, regardless of political party, and regardless of whether we're councillors or whether we're council staff. So we are in a deep, dark hole here, and we do need to understand that. And this may surprise you, chairman, it may surprise our leader. We will be supporting the recommendations on this paper today. And the reason we'll be supporting the recommendations is because after such a long time, you're finally doing what we've been asking you to do in budget speeches for the last ten years. So many of the things that are in this report are things that we have said, year after year after year, this council should be doing. We should be abandoning the straight-line percentage reductions, and trying to think about what matters most, protecting what matters most as our first priority, rather than the salami sali-ing of all budgets. We should be looking at commercialization as much as we possibly can. I say we've even embraced the idea that we now buy our coffees outside, supporting a local business. Terrific. We should be embracing prudential borrowing, where that's appropriate, and where there's a strong business case, because that can help us manage our resources better. And most of all, we should be looking to properly engage with governments, not just send them a letter and get a standard letter back. And if that's what we're really now doing, then we very much commend that. So because you're now following Liberal Democrat approaches, we will support these recommendations, madam chairman, and we commend them very much to council. If only you'd started this a lot earlier. We could have been doing this ten years ago, but we chose not to as a council, and that can't be right. But we embrace it while it's there. So we embrace the theory. We may not embrace the detail as we get along the way, but the concepts here are right for this council, and right to address some of the very difficult situations that we are now in. I leave you with one further thought from the nineteen seventies, which is the IMF. Isn't it a scandal that we are now in the position that normally in Argentina or Zimbabwe would be in, and we're getting, we're put on the naughty step by the IMF from the way we're conducting our finances nationally? I'm confident we won't be doing that in Hampshire, but we will take as prudent a response as we possibly can. We will, as always, from this side of the chamber, be happy and prepared to engage with that process as we go forward over the coming months. But yes, of course, we'll hold you to account...
Cancel your four minutes.
Finally, finally, madam chairman, we have the clock here now. It's one thing that's been missing, which is the clock. Well, that's great for you, but we can't see it, can we? I want to endorse councillor Forster's word, 'agitate'. We must agitate for Hampshire. On that, madam chairman, we can totally agree. Thank you.
Thank you councillor House. Do we have a reply to any of the questions that have or debates that's been happening? Thank you.
Madam? All right, I'll let the go first, okay?
Okay councillor Heron, shall we just have you to speak?
Chairman, thank you. I really couldn't let councillor House repeat his comments without saying something, because it really did feel to me like the leader of Venezuela lecturing the United Kingdom on their budget. I, chairman, I have sat in this chamber for a number of years, and I have listened to many Liberal Democrat budget proposals, most of them telling us to spend the very reserves that allow us to continue to save our residents as we go forward into these difficult times. It's easy to cherry pick one or two of your suggestions from a raft of crazy ones, and then say, 'Look, shouldn't you have done what we say?' Chairman, I do commend this paper plan. I do feel that our reserves and our forward thinking and our ways of working are excellent. And I do say, as we continue to find ways to balance the books for this council, I think we should look across examples set by others. I have never had a problem with looking at innovations of others and learning from them. And we can do that in Hampshire. And I would say with that, we should probably look at what happened to one of our councils with nearly half a billion pounds worth of borrowing, basically trading their resident futures on a bamboo of a roulette wheel, and see what happens there, and see if that is an example that we should follow for our vulnerable and our elderly. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Heron. Can we go to councillor Forster?
Madam chair, thank you. I find those comments about the chamber actually a bit disrespectful to the work done by our officers. I also don't recognize the amazing use of the chamber by Westminster, sorry, by Winchester City Council, by the coroners' court, and the way that raises funds. It's a phenomenal amount of work gone in. You may not see much of it. The amount of cabling that went into this chamber is actually about the same as from here up to the agricultural college. Three miles of cabling has gone in. There may be a few teething problems, but it's really good work, and it's a good environment to work in, and it's good for the city council, and the coroners' court, and all those families that come here in difficult positions. councillor House has a bit of a selective memory, or likes promoting misinformation. We're in the good position that we're in at the moment because of our reserves. And as he said, year after year, a bit like hearing a parrot, if we'd done what his group continually said, we'd have spent those reserves. There wouldn't be any money. We're in a good position because of prudent financial management.
Thank you councillor Forster. Leader, do you have any?
Yeah, thank you, madam chairman. I was going to say something very similar. councillor House is always very good at sort of saying, you know, we've now followed on with what you've done. But councillor Forster is exactly right. If we'd have done that at the time, we would not be in the position that we're in now. Unlike many other authorities who have already used their reserves, they're not in the same position that we are. We forward forecast, we look at what our position is there, and we've had discussions with the Treasury, and they're very clear about what our position is compared to some of the others. That's why they've come to speak to us. I think only two authorities in the country. What we did at the time was fit for purpose right to the time, and put us in that really strong financial position. The world has now changed. We have been through Covid, we're in an energy crisis, and now we are taking a different approach. But we're only able to do that because of the prudent way we managed our resources initially. So I don't agree with saying councillor House that we're following what he said and what they promoted. If we had done that, we'd be in the same position as many other authorities around the country, and we're not. And I stress, that's why the Treasury have come and spoken to our officers on this. So I'm very pleased at the approach we've taken, and the previous leaders as well, to councillor Mans and councillor Perry, and the officers and the team that have worked hard to do that. They have put us in that position that we've now got this two years, and yes, we are now taking a different approach. So I'm very supportive of that. But also, just the last comment I would make, when councillor House says we're supporting a local business outside, of course, that's our local business we're supporting.
Thank you leader. councillor Latham?
...the work, so I don't know whether you can hear me. Only, the only thing I would like to say is I want to endorse the recommendations contained in this report. We've talked a lot about reserves today, and they are of our success in managing our financial affairs over the last period of austerity. There's a mention in this report about a statement made in twenty eighteen, when we said that without increased funding for social care, we would eventually become financially unsustainable. That's what it said. And things since then have not got better. We still lack sufficient funding from the central government for social care. At that time, and I'll be specific now, our reserves, our cornerstone, stood at six hundred and forty-five million pounds, with in G E R and cost of change, a hundred and sixty-five million pounds. We are today in the strong position where we're today because our reserves have not gone down. The tipping point that might have happened, which might have made us unsustainable, has certainly not happened. Our reserves have in fact increased to eight hundred and eighty million pounds, and the money in cost of change and BBR has increased to three hundred and ten million pounds. And that is exactly why we as a council can look forward to the next two years with financially being able to support the council. That is not a position which is evident in many other councils in this country. But as far as the people of Hampshire is concerned, they should know that the amount they pay to HCC in terms of council tax is the lowest in the country, and the reserves that we have is the highest in the country. So we go forward knowing that we are probably in the strongest position possible. So I would like to commend what the officers have done over the last period of austerity and our cabinet, because we all know that there are difficult waters ahead. But with this cabinet, with these officers, I'm sure that in the future, they'll be able to steer us through. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Latham. And I'm sorry that I couldn't bring you up before because your microphone wasn't working, but... And I'm sorry that I couldn't bring you up before because your microphone wasn't working, but— Okay, can I just go to the recommendations, please? Recommendations on A and B on page 100 to the vote. Are you all agreed? Thank you. So that's confirmed. Now, we're going to go on to part two matters, but I'm looking at the clock and seeing what the time is. Would you prefer to go on to part two now? Fine, happy with that. Let's go on to part two. Hampshire and Isle of Wight Fire and Rescue Authority to deal with any questions which have been submitted pursuant to standing order 16.3 concerning the discharge of the Hampshire and Isle of Wight Fire and Rescue Authority's functions to receive a report of the authority. No questions have been received in regard to item 13A on your agenda. Therefore, I invite councillor Riddian Vaughan, chairman of the Hampshire and Isle of Wight Fire and Rescue Authority, to present his report.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have nothing to add to my report, but I'm happy to take any questions if there are.
Thank you, councillor Vaughan. Are there any questions? Thank you. Any debate? No. Okay, thank you. There are no questions, debates, we're going to move to the next item, which is constitutional arrangements. Appointments to the Health and Wellbeing Board, pages 123 to 124, to receive a report from the chairman of the Health and Wellbeing Board for Hampshire notifying the council of appointments made to the board under delegated authority. Members, I invite councillor Liz Fairhurst to present the report.
Thank you, Chairman. This is just to announce that we have appointed two deputies to the Health and Wellbeing Board to ensure that there is representation both from districts and borough councils and from Health Watch at Hampshire. Happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions for councillor Fairhurst? Okay. Let's move on to item 16, to receive for information the reports of the following. If I can turn my page. Executive member for adult services and public health, pages 125 to 126, to receive a report of the executive member for adult services and public health. Members, I invite councillor Liz Fairhurst again to present her report.
Thank you. I'd like to present to members part two. It's about new burdens funding that we receive from the government and happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Councillors, are there any questions? Any debate? Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on to the next item, which is B, executive member for Countryside Culture and Communities, pages 127 to 128, to receive a report of the executive member for Countryside Culture and Communities. Members, I invite councillor Russell Oppenheimer to present the report.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. In presenting this report on county farms, I would briefly like to draw attention of members to the newsletter referred to in the first paragraph of the report. That newsletter was attached to the letter I sent to the new Secretary of State Ranald Jajoyodena on Monday, which I forwarded to members. If you haven't had a chance to look at that newsletter, I'd like to encourage you members to go back to my email and click on it. The newsletter contains some highlights, case studies and photos from the last year, and you can see that a lot of good work has been done by the team, particularly on new entrant tenant farmers and on public engagement and education. It's only 10 pages long, this newsletter, so it'll only take you 10 minutes or so to flick through it. And if you do, I think you'll agree it's a very good newsletter. And I was very pleased when I arrived this morning to see that we coincidentally have Joe Heath here today standing in for Felicity Row. So if you'll allow me, Madam Chairman, I'd like to take the opportunity to say good job to Joe and to the county farms team and to the communications team for that newsletter. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Oppenheimer. Are there any questions? Councillor Glenn.
Mr Chairman, thank you. I have read your email, and I'm very grateful for your mention that you're going to certainly take my Member of Parliament round farms in my division. I presume because we are an equal organisation that you'll do it with everybody else. And so the important thing is that you give every councillor a chance to be involved in those visits when you do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Glenn. Okay. Is there any debate? Councillor Collett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mine's a question, actually. I hope that's permissible at this late stage. But totally support all the benefits of the county farms estate, and those are issues we've been familiar with for many years. Are there any plans to increase the scale of our county farms estate for all the reasons that the benefits are there? Thank you.
Councillor Oppenheimer. Councillor Forster.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you, councillor Collet, for the question. Strategic asset management policy of the council is currently being reviewed. Paper coming to Cabinet, I think, imminently. And we are always considering whether there is opportunity to acquire new land for exactly those purposes that the county farms were established for many years ago. So the answer is, yes, we'll consider it, but only if the opportunity is appropriate.
Thank you, councillor Forster. I don't think there's anything else that we need to say. So thank you all for attending. And I close the meeting to ask for the webcast to be stopped.